I was not here, so I'll make a motion to approve the September 6th meeting.
And I'll second that.
I will vote in affirmative as well.
And I'll make a motion to accept the September 10th minutes.
And I'm staying because I wasn't here.
And I would vote unanimous as well. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Paul?
I'd like to speak.
Yes.
I'm here and I'm not sure what capacity it is, but I just coming before you to present the purchase of a property in the town of Milford. I recently attended a finance committee meeting as a Parks Commissioner and we tried to get them to lease the building for five years and give us the money for that. And upon the finance committee listening to the presentation, the building is located at Sixth Front Street, which is where Highway Department is. The finance committee kind of turned the conversation into the purchase of the building. They requested that I get a bunch of information for them. I did. We are going to, in another previous conversation with the finance committee, the dollar figure did work from a finance perspective instead of leasing it. So we're trying to move forward with the purchase of the property owned by Vento Pinto at Sixth Front Street in Milford. It has a brand-new 7,500-square-foot steel building on the back, which the reason I'm here is we're trying to propose that to be the Parks Department headquarters, which we haven't had one in 14 years. We've been living out of trailers, tents, and with Scott, and Scott has had enough of us, so that's the part of it. But then if you look at it, the two properties on Front Street all belong to the town of Milford, so basically it's a complex, and the property is just perfect for the situation. So we have it basically ironed out with that, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up that I will be, I don't know what the time sensitivity is of it, and Rick, I'm new to this, so I'm just trying to work, just trying to work the time sensitivity of trying to get it to happen, so I just wanted to give you guys a small heads-up in what the thought process is. And as soon as I have paperwork from Mr. Pinto, then I can present it to Rick and go through the proper procedure, which I just learned about today, that I needed to do. So that's why I wasn't, I was hoping to be on today's agenda item, but I'm going to take the bad for that, that it was my fault, that I wasn't. So it's advantageous, there's three pieces of property there, and it'll be, I mean, perfect for the town. There'll be no worrying about trucks parked in the street or anything else, and Mr. Pinto's all for it, so it's not like he's being strong till he's ready to move on. So that's, just wanted to present it to you guys, if you guys have any question about that, but I know it's just my invitation to speak and you can ask, but it's going to work for the town and just move us in the right direction.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, is this moving forward to hopefully get on the October?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's the goal.
The goal is to try to get on the October warrant. Finance Committee can make it happen on the October warrant from our meeting that we had with them. We sat, we sat in a meeting with them and discussed it, and they said they can make it work.
And I know we have legally have the ability, obviously, to do that. I just want to make sure this is something that's kind of been rumored and talked about for years and years.
It has been, but it just all of a sudden, it hit the fast track on it. And, you know, we have three map and parcels that are involved in this deal. That old A.J. Knott building is three pieces of property. One that actually goes all the way to Beet Street. He has frontage on Beet Street. How it is, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing, but, I mean, if you think about it, you're at the Highway Department, you know, Parks Department, and that whole front building can be used in the future to expand, you know, space for Scott, which, you know, we have very expensive equipment sitting outside in the weather, and it just kills the life of it, so, you know, it's a win-win for the town of Milford.
Any questions?
No, this is, not that I haven't heard, you know, rumors, but, so this is new news, and, you know, I think it would make sense that, right now, we have a lot of representation how other people feel and with little in writing, so get a position from the FinCom. I've not seen any paperwork or ask price, so I don't even know how much we're talking about.
Until it's written in writing, I wouldn't bring it up anyway.
Right. So I don't know, until we know an ask price, I don't know how the FinCom knows whether they can or can't. And the other thing is, I would suggest that Parks and Highway get together, and if there's benefit to the town that's beyond what might be obvious, then that rationale and those details should be listed. Yeah, it's an interesting proposal because that whole area would become town-owned and available to the town, yeah, until we know, I guess, details.
Well, that's why, I mean, I appreciate you coming during invitation to speak, because if nothing else, at least we know what's being...
Awareness.
I'm just perking the ears, so everybody understands what my thought process, the Parks Department thought process, and I have discussed it with Scott, Bill, so he's on board too, so.
Well, I think it's important too, Paul, through the process, you have to remember that you, you know, that the property has to be properly appraised.
Oh, yeah, 100 percent, no. Again, these are all processes that I've learned in the last three or four days.
Understandable. Then what is the assessed value of the property? So, you know, as a community, we're going to walk through the process, you know? So, and ultimately, whatever the asking price is, we're going to depend whether the appraised value, the assessed value, and the asking all agree.
Totally understand. That's why, once I have it all in writing, then I will, you know, approach Rick and we'll go from there.
Thank you very, very much.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great night.
Yep.
Next agenda item is a public hearing. It's National Grid for pole location. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward to speak? Seeing no one, Representative from National Grid?
How you doing? I'm Josh Stabore. I'm electrical engineer with National Grid. So we'll be installing a pole right at the corner of Depot Street and National Street. I guess it's part of a fiber optic project they have going on. I think it's under Milford Power, they call it. So they'll be installing a pole and running new lines for their fiber optic and anchor, I should say.
And this is initial request from them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's going to happen on, I want to say 30 poles. It's just going to, they're putting in wire on 30 poles.
Oh, okay, all right. But this is the only pole that you know of that is needed?
That is correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, I've seen a fair amount of these over the years, and where there's naught in the butter that the board is sensitive to and their concerns, I see the areas pretty much in empty industrial area, frankly. And it's for the benefit of a business that's expanding and retrofitting and upgrading. You know, I don't have any questions or concerns. The information provided was sufficient for me to make a decision. I'd be inclined to approve, prepared to make a motion once the discussion is complete.
Yeah, I don't have any discussion. To me, this is a no-brainer.
Neither do I. It's very simple.
All right, so why don't I do this? Why don't I make a motion to approve Plan Number 23458618 dated 8/20/2018, where Massachusetts Electric will be installing a new pole? I don't know, is there anything else that you would need? Is that complete to you? All right.
I'll second that.
I would vote unanimous as well.
Lots of luck. Be safe.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, next agenda item is scheduled appointments. The first scheduled appointment is Mike Dean, Town Engineer, on an update, I believe, stormwater management. And Scott Christopher, the town highway surveyor. Good evening, gentlemen.
All right. I came up here, obviously, because I've been dealing with the stormwater for 11 years now. I've talked many times, whether it's the Selectman or the FinCom, about how much it's going to cost in the future, and it's been delayed and delayed and delayed, while it's finally here. So me and Mike worked on it, the NOI, we had that, get that submitted, and now we're going to do our stormwater plan, which is basically our plan for the future of our stormwater requirements. Like I said, the price is huge, you know? I'm going to let Mike talk more on what we need to do and what it's going to cost, and he's got a lot of bullet points and stuff. If you guys have any questions, but it's here and it's going to happen, so that's where we're at now.
Hand out these bullet points, or you probably have them.
Yeah, I think we have them.
Yeah, we do.
So we can just go through these bullet points, if you'd like? Okay. And Scotty had just mentioned the stormwater EPA. The permit is here. It's in effect as of July 1, 2018, so we're in year one. It's referred to as the Stormwater Discharge from Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems. That's where the MS4 is, that's where the abbreviation comes from, MS4. Town has been in compliance with the Phase 1 of this permit since 2003, so they've been complying. We've been doing the things that are required, such as annual reports, which is pretty much what Scotty does, catch basin clean and sweep and things of that nature. And we have to report on an annual basis to EPA. They've been, the town has been doing that since 2003. And the Phase 2 basically wants us to reduce our phosphorus coming off, coming from the town's stormwater into the wetlands and waterways, primarily the Charles River. So the EPA sees the Charles River as an impaired water, so once it's an impaired water, they give what's called a TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load. That's allowable to shed into that water system.
And that's been a stressed river basin for a long time, and we've never exceeded our maximum total load, right?
Correct, but basically, they've applied a total maximum daily load. Well, no, we're above, no, so they give it a total maximum daily load. And then, so the numbers are, they have an estimate of what we contribute to that Charles River.
Under the new requirements, I'm talking about prior.
Correct. Yeah, so then what they've come up with...
Always been in compliance.
So they give it a TMDL, a new TMDL under the permit, and they want us to reduce it by 42 percent.
How do they calculate that number?
Well, it's pretty sophisticated and modeled, and, you know, it's, I wouldn't, it's certainly not a guess. I mean, some people are like, well, did they sample water, you know, every foot down the river? The answer to that is no, but they're not guessing. There's scientists up at the high level modeling it. But this is where they set the numbers, and this is where, through the progression of this permit, we'll be collecting more data as well to understand it better.
And it is exactly part of those calculations, how they're arrived at, which communities are affected, and how much should be reduced, that the town is involved in litigation, that
Right.
Not a part of this discussion, but we should get an update on that as well, and have you guys present while we get that from council.
Yeah, there's still some mediation taking place right now, and I actually went to a briefing this morning, and it was just about the mediation. They couldn't tell us specifics, and by the end of the year, though, they'll have results of the mediation portion, but that doesn't...
Close it.
Still a lot of maneuvering, lawyer maneuvering going on.
Okay.
Okay, so, so basically, the permit is going to be implemented over 20 years. So we have the first five years, year one currently now, for the first five years, and I refer to that as basically the planning and designing portion of the permit. This is when we start collecting all the data. We hire the consultants. We put, we start putting the puzzle together to see how we're going to comply, okay? They're not taking a guess at it. What's required is a notice of intent. This is all prescriptive. Everything is outlined, what we need to do, so that notice of intent basically says that we're going to comply. You know, you have to comply to meet the permit, so that's all outlined. The notice of intent goes in, then we start implementing and evaluating the entire drainage system to hit those target points within, you know, that's outlined in the permit, but outlined in the notice of intent. So there's, you know, there's a bunch of different buzzwords or terms that are called, you know, that will be implemented, will be completing. We're pretty much done with the outfalls, but, you know, we'll refine that map, testing and sampling of all the stormwater, analyzing the existing stormwater system at a high level, all the drainage basins, public education programs, even targeting different audiences. You know, you have the residents, I mean, they even got it down to pet owners, industrial, commercial, the town-owned land, people that operate facilities for the town, so that's all broken up for your educational process and programs. They have minimum control standards and measures that you have to hit. And then, like I says, all of these items are just all set forth in the EPA's regulations. And then the following 15 years, years 6 through 20, that's where I refer to as, that's where the, that's where the big money is, so to speak. That's, that's when you actually start building BMPs. BMPs are best management practices, but actually, well, best management practices can mean several different things, but structural BMPs are actually building the basins, the one similar, you know, similar to what was just taking place and completed on Sumner Street in Diller. You grab an existing trunk line, drainage line, redirect it into a new structural BMP that treats the water, infiltrates the water, takes out an X amount of phosphorus, and it goes back out into the wetland. So that's, you know, and that's all based on the numbers. They have numbers based on how much it costs for these structural BMPs per pound of phosphorus. And it's $43,000 per pound is what it comes out to. Now, the one that we just did on Sumner Street, the conditions there were favorable because, one, we own the land, so we didn't have to acquire any land, but obviously, we're going to go to where we own the land at first. But we had decent soils, and we had a big trunk line, an existing 36-inch line that had like 70 acres contributing to that. And that's, that's going to remove 16 pounds, but it's a $350,000 project total. But that comes out only $22,000, only, I say, compared to the numbers that we're carrying at this point. So it can go up, it can go down. We're going to get through the process. We're going to adjust. That's what it's all about, adjusting, making sure we're doing the right thing. As you know, there's an article on town meeting warrant for October for $400,000 for year one. This has been built into the capital plan as long as I've been here. I've seen capital plans with even slightly higher numbers at the beginning. We discussed it, yeah, $600,000 for first year. We've discussed it, maybe knowing a little bit more and spending a little bit more over time through the delay, and mapping has already taken place, so we're at $400,000 for the first year. We're probably not going to spend exact, you know, 100 percent of the $400,000, but it'll give us the opportunity to adjust as we feel needed, as, this is, you know, we're not going to, this is going to be a learning process, you know? So, but by learning, we're going to make the right decisions as well. And then years 6 through 20, that's over $40 million, so, as we know, the permit will be community-wide effort in terms of planning, public education, implementation, and financially. That's the update for now.
Thank you. I'll open it up for questions, Bill.
Yeah, so the town meeting members will be looking at a $400,000 warrant article. And how much, you expect it to be roughly $1.5 million over the first five years?
Yes.
Okay. That means the big bill's coming, right? And that at year six, we start paying on what's going to be, and I think that's conservative estimate, at $40 million.
Yes.
You know, that means that schools, that means town departments, that means our borrowing capacity is significantly impacted over that period. I know you're the messenger, I'm not trying to shoot the messenger. What I'm trying to do is translate what you just said into practical terms for the rest of the town.
For the community.
That means approximately $2.6 million if we're lucky, because the $40 million is the lowest estimate I've heard yet for what this could potentially cost us.
Well, the original numbers were huge.
The original numbers were over $100 million. So when we estimate $40 million, what's your faith? And if you had to apply some risk to that number, what would you...
Well, so when stormwater first started coming around and those elevated numbers, those were based on a higher number for removal.
Right.
From EPA, so through this, this whole delay period of 10 years, if not, you know, as Scotty said, we've been talking about stormwater for quite some time, that was one of the consolations, so to speak. EPA came back with a lower number, so therefore...
No, I understand. My concern is that it's $60 million, $65 million, and I guess...
Yeah, so I don't think they're going to be 100. We're at 40 or 43. Could they be 50?
Sure. But also doing the BMPs like we just did, like that wetland, we got a grant for that, so it did save a lot of money with the grant, and I'm sure there's going to be more grants going forward, and there's going to be ways to try to save some of that money, obviously.
Right, but as towns gear up for the stormwater management plan, there, we're all going to be competing for those grants.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And I would tell you, and to your credit, being ahead of the curve on the stormwater management side led to your ability to get an early grant, and you were way ahead of where other towns were positioned on this MS4, in my opinion.
Well, we were, we were part of the three towns that were targeted and kind of the guinea pigs of the whole thing, so we already knew what we were dealing with, but other towns didn't know anything about it at one point, and we were already dealing with it.
Right. And then the legislation changed. We still don't know if the DEP will ultimately be managers of this.
Correct.
The EPA frequently gives the DEP authorization to manage federal edicts. So in any event, I think the message needs to be clear, and one of the things we probably ought to do is get an impact assessment of this number, because I'm looking at, you know, if I do simple math, and I don't think it's that simple when we get down to it, an impact of, you know, from 2026 to 2040, at a minimum of $2.6, $2.7 million per year. That is going to put a cash crunch on this town like we've never seen before.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know... Think about that. Take away operating cash of almost $3 million a year.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think what we need to do, I know this is your memo, you wrote it, you have your bullet points, but what we have to do is now take a risk assessment of what that impact is.
Yes.
And we also should get an update on where we are with that litigation to know where we stand. You know, everybody wants clean water. When we start taxing residents at a much greater rate to cover these, there goes our levy capacity, there goes our ability to borrow. You know, we're under serious constraint at that point, but...
Yeah, you might be looking at a utility at some point. You know, I know Franklin's doing that right now. They're actually looking into it.
And for the benefit of other, for the benefit of those who aren't familiar with utility, a utility takes it off the tax rolls...
Still has to be paid for.
...puts a greater burden on individuals who have one acre plus of parking lot and roof. So what we're talking about is a dual tax rate, and then a tax rate on top of that that's outside the levy capacity that taxes small businesses, frankly, for the rain that falls on their buildings and parking lots, that water's treated.
Yeah, it's on rain.
So, in any event, I just wanted to put it in perspective.
Do you think, small presentation at town meeting at this point, because no one really understands this. You know, we, I've been dealing with it for a long time, so to me, it's just second nature, and same with Mike, and, but for the actual residents and the town meeting members to understand what this actually is, and it's a lot.
I think it is.
I don't think you can ever get enough information out there.
No, but I guess my concern would be the ability to put one together in time that's coordinated with the right parties, because we have, we have the finance piece of it. So we have finance director, we have FinCom members that have to participate, and if you're signing up for presentation to town meeting that pulls all of the resources together and communicates this, I'm all for it. Like Mike said, we can't over-communicate.
I'm not talking a big, all along presentation, something 10, 15 minutes talks.
Yeah.
And just to get the point across, and they'll understand somewhat what it is.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, I mean, when you even ask and do a presentation, whoever's going to do that for the $400,000 for the stormwater, I mean, we're at least going to give this history, right? And the history and what it looks like in general terms going forward, because I imagine, you know, town meeting members have also, you know, heard about this over the years, obviously with different asks, but, you know, I think at least giving them even a brief presentation that you gave us tonight, so that they know what's coming down the pike, even though we might get more specific later on and pull everyone together at a few...
Yeah, I think we'll need to, I think we'll need to do that, because...
Just like when we were doing the water, you know, making all those multiple presentations at the water company.
The ask this time is for a very small sliver of a massive pie. It's the rest of it that I'm worried about.
Absolutely, but I think they need to know what that $400,000, you know, is a small piece of the pie, and what that actually means going forward. We're saying it's a very small lot of $40 million plus, yes, but it's still a lot of money in a single warrant when we're asking people to support something that we have to support, because none of us really have, over the last few years, even when I was on the FinCom when we were talking about this, this isn't anything that I've heard someone jump up and down for and say it's a wonderful thing and it's going to be great for the, great for the town of Milford.
That's the challenge.
I mean, again, you take off the, you said $3 million out of the operating budget, never mind everything that Bill, that you just mentioned. We also give a million to $3 million a year in taxpayer relief, so we have to put that on top of all of those things you listed as well. And again, you won't be on the board then. Chances are, I'm not going to be on the board then, that's for sure. So, again, you know, this is all planning for the future, way past maybe any of us sitting here, you know, making the decisions and certainly talking to different people who are going to be sitting at the town meeting.
Yeah, good point, because this, yeah, we're talking 2026 when the real money kicks in.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate you guys coming.
First of all, thank the both of you for all the work that you put into this project. I talk very openly about it. The problem that I have with this project is I'm from the generation of, back in the day, the dirty gas stations, and tons and tons, and it was EPA's ruling. Tons and tons of dirt was hauled all the way to the middle of New York State at the cost of billions of dollars to insurance companies, to oil companies, to gas companies, and then all of a sudden, one day, I don't know when it was, 10 years, whatever it was down the road, somebody from the APA said, you know what? Why don't we just dig the dirt out of the ground, put it alongside the building, cover it in plastic, and every so many days or weeks, flip it with a backhoe? I'm very concerned that the same thing is going to happen with this. I truly, truly am. We're going to start investing hundreds and then millions of dollars into a project, and probably not even 15 years down the road, somebody's going to come along and say, you know what? We got another idea. We can do this. And the impact, the financial impact to the communities, it's already done. It's already done. There's no getting that money back. They're not going to come to us and say, well, you know what? Here's your $20 million back. We made a mistake, and that's, that's one of my concerns, and that's a major concern, because I lived it firsthand, and I saw, I saw some people even lose their businesses over it that weren't necessary. And so we're going to put this burden on the taxpayers of our community, and I still say, and I had a long conversation with Rick the other day, I'd love to push back, and I know we can't, but I'd love to, because I'm just so concerned that something like this is going to happen. And the other thing that I have a concern with, and I appreciate what you've done, is how do we know 15 years down the road what the financial impact is going to be, what the cost is going to be? We don't. We don't, you know?
I'm not sure we even know if it's actually going to take the phosphorus out that they're talking about.
Right.
We don't even know that.
Right. It doesn't have the desired effect.
Do all this, spend all that money, and have no effect.
Right, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you just said we built that beautiful basin down the end of Summer Street, and for all that money we spent, it... basin down the end of Summer Street, and for all that money we spent, it gets, pulls 16 pounds, is that what you said?
16 pounds.
16 pounds. I mean, that's, that's quite a project down there. It only pulls 16 pounds of phosphorus?
Yep.
Very, yeah, yep.
Yeah. I give a...
When you said pushback, wasn't there, I mean, there was word of the three towns joining together, and did, did we start an appeal or a lawsuit or?
Not, not the three towns, but through different organizations, there's been a lot of appeals and a lot of questions and a lot of...
But everything has gotten addressed.
That's been the delay for the last 11 years.
Yeah, we joined a multi-town effort and funded that.
And again, don't take it the wrong way. I appreciate everything that you two do, but I just...
They get it.
No, we need to all understand this. It's a community effort, community-wide effort. It's financially planned and everything. It's...
It's a, it's a huge impact to the community, and I'm just...
Huge.
I'm very fearful that down the road, you know, maybe when we're all not sitting here, you know, it's, it's going to change. And all that money has been spent and wasted, in my opinion.
Mike, just so everyone's clear here and people watching at home, I mean, but this is, we're doing what we're mandated to do between year one and year five since July 1st, so...
It's funded mandate, yep.
Right, so we don't have any time to, you know, we, we do have to start this process. I don't think you'd be here if we didn't have to start this process.
Absolutely not.
Because if that's debatable, let's talk about it. But I'm under the assumption it is not, because for past 11 years, you've been talking about getting to this point.
Right. Doing the bare minimum to this point to get to this point, I guess, what we've been doing.
Keeping us compliant.
And there's been delays in implementing the phase two of it from pushback, you know, communities, etc.
Yeah, the EPA put a hold on their decision-making.
Exactly, but now it's here.
Yeah, it's here.
Yes, yes.
No more delays.
I'm good, thank you. Thank you, General.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for everything.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next scheduled appointment is Chuck Reno, our tree warden.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for everything. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I wanted to give you a quick report on, on a status of some trees here in town. In the recent years, basically 14, 15, 16, and current, we've suffered a lot of defoliation by gypsy moth, and we also had a severe drought in 15. With those put together as a combination, many trees have died. I have well over 100 trees now that have died, and I'm still counting. And so for reasons of public safety and possible prevention of road closures, power outages, and the like, that will happen. It's not an if, it's, it's a will when these trees really start falling apart. I'm sponsoring an article in the October town meeting for $100,000, and I'm here to ask for your support. It's that simple, to, to get, to get as many of these trees out as we possibly can.
Yeah, Chuck, will town meeting have a list of the trees and sense of the safety impact of each?
No, not of each. I mean, and you, you've seen it, we've all seen it on the news. A tree comes down...
No, no, I'm just trying to think. There, there are certain trees that if you let them fall, they're knocking out the, the hospital power.
Right, right.
Right. There are other trees that if they fall in the woods, nobody's going to hear them.
Yeah, well, we're not, we're not going after the ones that, yeah, I understand, the falling in the woods. We're not going after that. We're going after trees, if you will, that have a target. Target could be the road, could be the power lines, and the way the tree is, is leaning or situated, that, that's all taken into consideration. So I'm, I'm well aware of, you know, where, where these are. I'm also in contact with Mass Electric. They're very aware of it. But it's not a Milford problem as such. It's a statewide problem because of, because of the gypsy moth and the drought. They're dying everywhere. And Mass Electric will help out.
Yeah, those are imminent risks of power.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I just think, you know, I think it's inherently good thing that we remove hazardous trees.
Yeah. I'm trying to stay ahead of the curve here, you know?
Trying to understand and have sufficient information to know where the trees are, what, what risks they pose, that type of thing is helpful.
Yeah.
You have the inventory, but we...
I do, I do, and I can get that to you. I mean, the risk that they pose is the road closures and power outages.
Yeah, but a road, you know, so a road closure in a neighborhood is one thing.
Right.
Power being knocked out to 30% of the town is another.
Correct.
Right, so each one has its...
Right. You, you have to understand how power comes off the grid to know that. The three-phase lines, if you will, if you're familiar with those?
I am.
If those go out, it doesn't matter what the single, the single-phase lines can be intact, however, the three phases feeding the single phases. It's, it's, it's areas like that. Most of these trees, I will say, are, are in our wooded areas, the north end of town, Cedar Street, Bear Hill. So, you know, the neighborhood trees, they're handled generally through my yearly budget, but just, this is overwhelming. The budget could not handle this kind of work, you know, with the budget that I have. Okay?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chuck. Will the $100,000, do you think that'll, because how long will this take? Is this a couple-year project, do you think?
No, no, it'll be done in a year. I mean, it's not all for, for the tree removal. You know, we have to include police details, which we'll need. There's, there's a little bit of an upside to it. All of the debris will be ground up and chipped, and what I do with that every two or three years is mulches made, and it saves the town a considerable amount of money. It's used by all of the departments. And, you know, like I said, we do it about every two or three years, and that's enough to sustain us for, for that period, and then, you know, we'll do it again. So the upside to that would be that. I mean, we would save approximately, mulches approximately $22 to $25 a yard wholesale. We make 1,000 yards for $7 to $8 a yard. So there's a big savings there.
Oh, that's great. No, I, I fully support it, and this is your expertise. And just in case you didn't know, catch the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, I asked Rick about the, all the trees that were pruned and everything on Main Street. He said that you got all that done. It's why I've gotten so many compliments. They look fantastic. So thank you for that, too. A lot of people noticed, and that was, that was nice.
Nice to hear. I mean, you know, that's done every so many years also, depending on the needs. It's a fairly expensive proposition to do that.
I'm sure it is.
It was around $10,000 to do, just do the Main Street and Central Street trees.
Huge crew.
I'll tell you, they look great.
Yeah, we had, I think, 12 people in here. Has to be done early morning for obvious reasons.
Thank you for that. No, I'm all set.
The only thing I'd like to add, Chuck, is, you know, we, we talk about the power and, and power outages and things like that. The other thing we have to look at is personal injury.
Correct.
Somebody could be just walking down the street. Somebody could be jogging down the street, and a windy day, and a limb falls.
That's correct.
You know, and we're liable for it. So, you know, that's why we thank you for your, you know, your work, and let's move forward with it.
As, and also as an aside, not related to this, I'm developing a vegetation management plan for basically weed control on the sidewalks, not all streets, but most of the main roads. That has to be approved by the state in order for us to do it, because it is illegal to apply any kind of herbicide to a town road without state approval.
Thank you for working on that, because I've had, had some people reach out to me in particular about the sidewalk from, let's say, the start of, at the intersection of 16 and 109, heading up towards Quarry Square.
Yep.
That size, you can't even, you can't even walk on it.
It's brutal.
You know?
I mean, it, we, we can't obviously apply anything to private property, but it'll be done on our side, you know, the, the town property.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can add, it's just in our list of articles, it denotes that obviously the Tree Wardens article for tree removal, Article 16 denotes that it's not on the five-year capital plan. I don't know, obviously, Chuck, you probably haven't gone to the FinCom yet.
No, I'm having a meeting next, next week with the FinCom.
But I think it's obviously important to note that, obviously, this isn't something you can plan on a, a gypsy moth infestation, as far as I understand. So, so that makes a perfect sense. I know, I know it was noted with the red, you know, the red evil asterisk, but, you know, I think this is an exception, so...
Yeah, you can't predict that, or the drought, for that matter.
No, no. I know we're talking about the warrants, the warrant later on with all the articles that we're going to support, or do we, you know, do we want to take them all up together, or, I mean, I'd like, if he's asking for support, I'd like to at least, if we do support it, I know I do, I would like to do that. So I don't know if we want to do it now, or if we just want to take them all on.
Yeah, we've got it as old business coming up right after the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay. I guess we'll do it in a couple minutes, though.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chuck.
Next agenda item is Town Administrator's Report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two items tonight, and both, I think, complimentary of the dedicated employees we have. I'm pleased to report that the Treasurer Chris Pillar has passed the examination and met all requirements to be designated as a certified Massachusetts Municipal Treasurer. Also, Tax Collector Terry Dias has passed the same examination for her discipline and met all requirements to be designated as a certified municipal tax collector. So I wanted to both congratulate and commend each of them for their commitment in achieving state certification. I also want to acknowledge and thank members of our police and fire departments who responded to the City of Lawrence and to the town of Andover to provide their assistance in the aftermath of the gas explosions occurring in Lawrence, Andover, and North Andover last week. Specifically, the Police Special Operations Unit provided assistance at the Andover Command Center on September 13th. The assistance was included at intersections to assist with traffic control and in neighborhoods to provide protection and security. Two days later, two members of the team again reported to the City of Lawrence and were assigned to a docked neighborhood to provide policing services and security for evacuated homes. In addition, this past Friday, September 14th, Ladder One from our fire department with a crew of four firefighters traveled to Lawrence as part of the Mass, Massachusetts Structural Task Force. They worked throughout the night handling various calls and were paired with gas crews and police units. So again, I want to thank them on behalf of the town and on behalf of the board. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, certainly, anybody's watched the news in the last few days, you know, there are a great many towns who are struggling with natural disaster, or, I don't, I don't even know what to call the gas issue. I don't know that it's a natural disaster, but it's certainly impacting those communities. And there isn't any near-term hope for those folks getting gas service back up anytime soon. So I think we're reminded frequently, and it's good that we have Fire Chief in the room, because he's our Emergency Management Director, that all the planning we go through and the cost we go through in the hopes of not using some of these services, you know, it's really an insurance policy. We hope we're never in that situation, but our current situation is such that if we had to, we could light up the Milford High School and create an island. It would be powered by itself, full power, capable of, you know, all of the showers and food preparation, capable of being able to accept people with pets, capable of, you know, in, if, if activated, like Lawrence, Andover. So we're capable, we're ready. We have professionals who are ready to address this. And again, hopefully, it's an insurance policy we never have to cash in on. And, you know, the municipal aid, to your point, Rick, makes sense, and we're glad to see our police and fire involved in the, you know, mutual aid of other, other communities as they would be here for us if we needed them. But it's especially important when we think about the hurricane victims along North Carolina, the gas victims in the Merrimack Valley area. Those things can and do happen, and hopefully don't happen here, but you never know. So, thank you to those police and firemen who, who went there.
Yeah, do you think we could just send an acknowledgement to the department from us? I think that's the least we can do.
Sure.
I have no, I have no further questions.
I had a great conversation. I was at the, the Policeman's Fireman's Basketball Game at the Youth Center, and the Fire Chief was smiling back there because the Fireman pulled off the win at the very end. But I had a great conversation with Robbie DiCino, and, he, he really talked a lot about mutual aid and how important mutual aid is to communities. And sometimes people get critical about, you know, the cost of it. But he said if you flipped it the other way around, you would want these other communities to be supportive of the town of Milford. And that's what makes mutual aid, you know, so important. And makes me very proud to think that our fire and police departments were able to, I mean, that's a distance from here. I can't imagine riding Engine One all the way to Lawrence. It's going to be quite a ride. But it's just nice to know that they can reach out to a community like Milford, and we're always, we're always here to help, help, you know, help everybody. So again, I agree with Will. We should send, you know, send along something just from the Board of Selectmen, say thank you very much, and we appreciate what you do every single day. And, you know, Chief, the other day, we spoke about it at the senior center. Fire and police are taught to run into harm's way. And, you know, with the general public, we're taught to run away from harm, you know? And that takes a special, special person. So again, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you touched on the, the basketball game at the Youth Center. On a much lighter note, I got to tell you, it was pretty, even, even the follow-up with the newspaper articles, and the Milford Daily News actually did a really good job of, you know, a photo layout and even having it online. I was going to say, a lot of people were talking about how nice it was to see the experienced firefighters and officers with the new guys. It was just, it was a lot of fun, and it was good to see that camaraderie. I know they all have it, I'm sure, behind the scenes, but to see it, it's just something that I think people haven't seen something like that in a long time, and it's just a real positive notable for the, for the town. But to see the firemen and the police, and again, some guys are in their last years, and some are in their first years. They were all playing, they were aggressive, and they took it seriously. They had fun.
And they were all gassed.
Yeah, it was, it was just a real positive thing to see.
And there was only one injury, a finger.
Oh, the finger.
Sorry. Again, thank you, thank you very much. Next agenda item is old business, Rick?
Yeah, the, the town meeting warrant, just one correction, if you will, the warrant in front of you, the original Article 8 has been deleted in speaking with members of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee. That was not supposed to be on the warrant, and they added Article 34, which provides for a request for a budget for general expenses for that committee. So there are 36 articles. You do have a revised warrant in front of you. I also have a listing of the articles that I have prepared for you. So if the board is willing, then I would like you to vote to approve, again, the special town meeting warrant, which we will repost tomorrow on the website. And I'd also, not looking for a vote, but just put out there for you, we have talked about, we have the nice new improved website now. So we'd like to, with the board's okay, to start to put up, you know, background material, material that we look at and the board looks at to support these articles, so the public can maybe start looking at some of that.
That's great.
We're going to have also, I might as well mention now, too, a, I'm not sure what to call it, but a pre-town meeting forum, Reno. We're looking at October 9th at 7:00. I know Reno's committee, myself, Mike Nofree specifically, are looking at how we will set that up. And we'll be making an announcement on that hopefully tomorrow to department heads. I think Reno, I don't know if they're meeting that tonight or they're meeting soon.
We're meeting Monday, Monday night.
Okay. So, so I want to get that out there, at least verbally right now, but there'll be follow-up on that. So tonight, I thought was a good time to, to just mention that to the board. It's a first for us, and so we're kind of feeling it gently, but I just want the board to be aware of that. But specifically, the board should vote to approve the town meeting warrant now, so that I can post that for tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the town meeting warrant to be provided to the town and to be appropriately posted.
I'll second that.
And make that unanimous.
Well, second to that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make some recommendations as it relates to certain articles. Now, as is always the case, some articles are individually sponsored by businesses. Other articles are sponsored by individual departments, so it may not be as appropriate to talk about sidewalk tractors and truck plows. We don't always jump in there, but we allow the individual departments to provide their rationale and justification to FinCom and let the FinCom work with that. But there are certain articles that are, that are ours and, you know, speak to some of the things that we would like to accomplish. So with that, I'd like to make a proposal that we vote to support the articles the Board of Selectmen has sponsored. We vote, we vote to support the article for the tree warden that we just heard about as it relates to public safety, electrical, and roadway passing. And that we'll let the other departments talk to their different studies and different pieces of equipment they'd be interested in, if there's any others people would like to add.
I mean, I'll, I'll certainly second that for discussion, but I do want to add that Reno and Mike are both here, and they, from the Town Meeting Study Committee. Do we want to?
Yeah.
I would think that we've, we've been in constant communication with these folks, so I don't know if you want to include them in this one, or I'm going to make a motion for, for a separate one.
That's 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 34, and 22, in addition to the... to the Selectmen, in addition to Article sixteen for the Tree Warden. Good point, Will, thank you.
And I'll second that.
I would make that vote affirmative as well, unanimous.
Can I ask, Mr. Chairman, can I ask, again, because Reno's here, and Rick, you mentioned something about Article thirty-four, Budget for General Expenses, which makes sense. Do we have a number for that yet, or is that being worked out? Because I think it makes sense that.
Five thousand.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm just looking at our cheat sheet.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't sneak the number in there.
No, no, that's okay, I just didn't know if you even came to that yet.
They did provide the number, it's five thousand.
Okay, great.
And what we.
I think it's important, so.
What we don't have in the, as Will referred to, the cheat sheet, we don't have the tax rate offset number?
Not yet. No, I don't have the architect downtown revisation number. The offset number, we have a, we talked about it in one of our meetings, not the Selectmen, but with the FinCom and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. We do have a number in mind, but obviously, we want to see how everything else plays out, and that number will then be sponsored by, again, the Board of Selectmen. So, we'll have our financial team meeting, and hopefully, by then, all the numbers will solve them, resolve themselves, yeah.
Okay, great.
But the number is in mind and.
Yeah, the only reason I ask, obviously, these two gentlemen are here tonight, and I appreciate Chuck coming and actually asking for our support, so, you know, we heard him out, I think that's, that's important, so, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, next agenda item is new business. The first item under new business is the Milford High School Boosters Club for their annual cornhole tournament. Milford High School Boosters, thirty-one West Fountain Street, Milford, Massachusetts. Purpose of the event, cornhole tournament for the athletic teams. It's going to be held at Milford High School, thirty-one West Fountain Street. It is going to be October twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, I'm sorry, it's taking place at Fino Field, not at the high school, between the hours of twelve and nine P.M. The event will be held for the benefit, nonprofit, yes. Will there be a cash bar? Yes. Is there an entrance fee or donation fee required? Yes. Is the event open to the general public? Yes. Twenty-one years or older? Any discussion? No, I'd make a motion that we support that request.
I'll second that.
I would vote unanimous as well. The next new business is the Milford Lions Club permit to obstruct for the toll road. I'd make a motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
I would vote unanimous as well. We have the chief's signature as well. Yeah, we do have a. Oh, go ahead. Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to check.
No, no, no. Just for additional new business, Rick, I was hoping that we could have the police chief look into Hayward Street. I've gotten a few complaints regarding parking on both sides of that street. I went down there today on my way home at traffic time, and there is only room for one car on a lot of that area. From Central Street to Mount Pleasant, there's only parking on one side. And I certainly don't want to displace anyone who lives down there or neighbors, but that's a major thoroughway, and it was pretty interesting to spend twenty minutes down there today. So, I'd like just to see if we should be looking at that. It's from the Mount Pleasant Street going towards Main.
Whether we restrict parking to one side or something.
Yeah, it was really tight, and there was a couple of close calls and a couple, a couple angry drivers. And also, I got a complaint, which I'm very familiar with the area, and yet I still didn't realize where Findley Court was. So, I looked at Bragg Slip, Baker Slip, and Findley Court, which are all the side roads that either go from Central to South Bow, South Bow to Central, and then Jefferson to Central. A couple of them look wider than others, but especially Findley Court is extremely narrow, and one of the businesses down there gave me a call and said that one of their elderly customers almost got hit because someone was parked there at the corner. So, I was just hoping we can look at that. That's about as wide as my driveway. Again, I'm not the expert in this field, but, you know, I think we should at least look at that. I know a couple of the, a couple of the slips do have no parking to the corner and parking on one side. I didn't write down all the specifics for each one, but I'm thinking that the chief will be able to make a determination, probably, pretty quickly.
Okay, so Findley Court?
Findley Court, Bragg Slip, and Baker Slip.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I as well, Rick, and you and I have had conversation about this, is that, and I live it firsthand, because I come out of my, my son's house off of South Central Street, and, you know, you get to that intersection, and I believe it's Mount Pleasant, and now, all the way down to, you know, Route sixteen, it's, you're pulling in, cars coming by, you're pulling out, car, you know, pulling in, and it takes you fifteen, twenty minutes to get down there. That shouldn't be the most important, it's the safety. Yeah, it's a safety issue, for sure. Safety, and I've had people reach out to me and tell me that cars are parking on the sidewalk at night. In other words, they put two wheels up on the sidewalk and two out on the street, so now people that are coming down the sidewalk at night or during the daytime can't, can't get down the sidewalk. So, that's something I think that definitely needs, we need to get the chief involved. And the other thing we need to get the chief involved in is, I'm getting numerous complaints from people on Beach Street about all the truck traffic. I personally was in a home last week, and they are correct, they are correct. It's, it's, not only is it dangerous at the speed that these vehicles are driving down Beach Street, and these people are trying to pull out of their driveways, back out of their driveways, so you're not only dealing with that, it's, so it's an inconvenience factor, it's a safety factor, and it's a noise factor, it's a noise factor. So, if you could reach out to the chief, you know, I'd like him to get involved in that, and that'd be great. Thank you. Bill, anything you can do? No, and the next item I do, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so we did new business, we're done. Okay, correspondence, we do have a letter of resignation. To the Selectmen in the town of Milford, I would like to inform you that it is time for me to retire from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's been a pleasure to serve on the board, and I appreciate the confidence that you have shown in me. My resignation will be effective on September thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Yours truly, Charles D. Antonio. And as always, Rick, if you could please make sure that we get a nice letter out to Mr. D. Antonio for his service to our community for many, many years. I know that he was reinstated after retirement to help us with some projects that are going on in the community, but again, you know, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to say thank you for the many, many years of service that you gave to this community. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you talked about the ZBA. It's unfortunate that Mr. D. Antonio resigned, I completely understand. I think what people need to understand, probably one of the least appreciated boards this summer was the ZBA, and the amount of work that the ZBA processed and went through on the forty Bs was incredible. So, you know, I think it would be nice to send a letter to each of the members of the ZBA, thanking them and appreciating, appreciating their effort in helping this community work through all the details of the, of the forty Bs. Personally, I think the work that they've had to do and the meetings they've had to be at are unprecedented for a ZBA anytime in the past that I can recall, so.
Over the summer, too.
Yeah, it's a lot of hours over the summer, and I just want a, a special thank you from this board, I think, would be nice, and it's good that we talk about that, and Charles' note brings that to mind. The other point I had, Mr. Chairman, is we all received communication, and since we're talking about correspondence, we all received.
Did I just get a motion, Bill? Usually, we do a motion to accept with regret and.
Oh, yeah, I moved to, we accept with regret, and also include Mr. D. Antonio in that note that we sent to the ZBA members, he was a big part of that.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous.
Thank you.
And then the second point, Mr. Chairman, is we all received communication from Proverdi regarding a host community agreement. I just wanted to see where that was, if we can get it on a meeting agenda.
From Proverdi?
Proverdi, they required, believe it or not, to also go through the licensing process.
Right, local licensing.
They have sent us a draft.
Draft host community.
Host community agreement for the board to consider.
I thought there was, the reason I reacted like that, I thought there was some. That's the lab, yes?
Yes, that's the testing lab.
I thought we weren't having host agreements with labs. I thought the CCC brought that up, was there a change of heart?
I understand the rules are a little different in that you have to show significant impacts and things of that nature, but they have reached out to us, they have provided a sample, a draft community host agreement.
We received that.
I've had conversations with their attorney. I know Charles has had much more contact with them than I have and has reviewed the agreement. I was under the same impression that you were, believe it or not.
Yeah, and the reason I want to talk about this, not just getting a piece of mail, but talking about it publicly, is because there was some conversation in different forums around town and in different groups saying that, that, that we were, the Board of Selectmen was looking for a host agreement for a testing lab, is this, is.
It's, the other, they reached out to us, and we've had contact with their council.
Okay, because when approached, I actually said that at that point, I had, I, we were not part of any.
No, all I've provided so far. This is actually the first discussion we've had on it.
Yes, I just want to make that clear, because this is exactly what was talked about. And, you know, I know some of us, because it was in the press as well, we got called and we said, this was not a topic of conversation, so.
This is the first time it's been brought up. I think we have a draft in front of you that you've seen, but that's about it, so that's about it at this point.
I just think that's important to let the, let the public know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Look to the chair to see how we can move on. Proverdi is awaiting a response, I guess is the best way to put it. Right, so I thought of a couple of different things. I didn't know, is everybody available Thursday night at six o'clock? Could we do a quick meeting Thursday night at six o'clock? I'm available Thursday night. I prefer not to wait until our next meeting, which is October first.
No, I can do that.
And our executive session, six o'clock. Six o'clock, Rick, okay.
Okay, I will set that up.
This Thursday at six o'clock. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Will.
I am all set, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, regarding the Zoning Board of Appeals, I had just a note that at the next meeting, can we discuss, because I want to make sure by September thirteenth, we have someone in place. And I know there are two alternates on that board, and John Mastriani is the longest-serving alternate, so I just want to make sure that we're prepared to have that discussion, so that that board doesn't, the ZBA does not go with any time with a vacancy.
Would you like me to place that on the agenda, then?
I think we should, just because I want to make sure I'm respectful that Mr. D. Antonio, who's very much a gentleman, is, you know, has another, what, did he, oh, he already, he's out, so. I just don't want any meetings to take place with everything going on with the vacancy. We have two, two alternates on that board, and John is the longest-serving one. Sometimes that's a discussion, sometimes it's not, but I wanted to let that be known.
Sure.
Because I don't think we want a vacancy for too long on that seat.
No.
They got too much going on.
Okay, I will put that on the agenda for the.
Can we put it on for Thursday, have an open meeting session? We just talked about how busy the ZBA was, I was just wondering if.
I just don't know if you folks want to look at the talent bank as well, but.
We can open an open session and then go back into a session.
I'll put the talent bank applications.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do it.
On the sixth, I mean, on.
Thursday.
Thursday at six, excuse me, so we'll do an open meeting for that.
Twentieth.
Twentieth, okay, sure.
I know I'm supportive of the existing alternates, so.
But at least if we get the talent bank, we can fill that, that seat, but hopefully,